...the meeting, the public hearing on the comprehensive plan order at 7:03. And I think before we do any further agenda with introductions down the road, we've got Mr. Ridgeway playing Camerman.
Town Planner, Ted Redman.
John Bell.
Sean Hayes.
And that Ridmore and Marian Robbins are not here yet, but will not be there and they're probably screwed in a few minutes late due to another obligation. Have an emotional approve the agenda, please.
Should move to second.
All those in favor? Okay. Open the public hearing at this point. And what we did this year was actually, it looks like very little, but it was very time consuming for very little. The first thing that we are going to propose is that if you look at page nine, under mixed use, mixed use growth areas. Last year, it suggested that perhaps we could put a mixed use area at the junction of the Eastern Trail and Limerick Road. And we spent a good deal of time exploring that possibility, even though instead of looking at the entire length of the Eastern Trail to see if there was an appropriate area in terms of land where something like that might occur. After, I guess, about three meetings worth of looking at maps, discussing it, vying it back and forth, and coming up with possibilities that almost didn't quite work, our recommendation is that we simply eliminate that as a possibility for time being. I think the planning board will support that, but that will be, depending upon when the town approves our removal of that suggestion at this point in time. Does anybody have a question or comment on that?
You were saying make it a mixed area near the Eastern Trail?
Yes.
So what, close in proximity on maybe the thoroughfare for a business to be there?
That was the original idea, but we really required press to public what looked like an appropriate area of land that was not wetland, just nothing quite worked for us in terms of possibilities. I think that's probably something we can come up again in the future, or somebody's got a more definite idea, but right now it doesn't seem to be the time.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, then if you go to page fourteen, the other proposals that we're making is that the natural resource conservation language be eliminated completely. Basic reason is that there is sufficient overlap with the shoreline zoning rules where this is really redundant and unnecessary.
Shoreland zoning was strictly in Washington?
Yes, and the shoreline zoning was stricter than what we had going here anyway. So because of its redundancy, we figured that should probably come out of the comp plan. Anybody have a comment or question about that?
Explain just where that area was.
Well, it was primarily around Bribstone Pond, but it, the language extends it
To Indian River.
To other places as well, yes, Kennebunk River. But again, shoreline zoning covers all of those areas quite nicely. Thank you. Okay, and then the third thing is the next thing on that same page, the corridor protection overlay, which was aimed at the Route 111 corridor. That has been in the comp plan for years and years and years, and nothing has ever come up to cause it to be implemented. So the planning board has nothing in their regulations, the land use regulations to address it, and again, we saw that as just unnecessary words at this point in the comp plan. So our suggestion is that that also be eliminated. Questions or comments on that? Seeing done, I'll walk to the next item. And actually, I'd have seen three things that we covered, short order and together, both the goals, policies, and actions section of the plan, and the implementation plan, which are really the same thing, approached two different ways. As we look through them, we came up with a number of grammatical errors, a few sentences that were a little iffy in terms of making sense, some that were not as clear as they might be as they were written. So we simply went through and did housekeeping on those. There was no substance change there in terms of the intent of the goal, policy, or action, just as I said, just housekeeping and cleaning up. Yes, sir?
Are you saying the three items you just pointed out, are there only changes in the comp plan?
This time, I guess.
Changes compared to what?
The comp plan, approved last June. Yes. In 2014, we had made some significant changes which were approved last June. So the only thing we have done this year is eliminate those three items.
So the, yeah, I've got, I've got the provision for residential development, forcing cluster housing for ten acre lots. That's not new.
No, that was approved last year. Well, and I may have Ted help me out with this a little bit, but my understanding is that the clustering has been in the comp plan and the land use ordinance for a long time. What we changed last year was the addition of the ten acre lot option, which would give landowners just that, an additional option in terms of how to break up or subdivide the land. So it's not taking, that was not taking anything away, it was giving landowners something new that they could use as a tool.
And the conservation easement language is not new either?
Not this year, no.
Transfer of the development rights program?
That's also not new. That, that, it, there is no likelihood that actually makes that exist in town, but the transfer of development rights program as a potential goal has been in the plan again for years. There have been some fits and starts in terms of finding where to do that and make it work, but it's never gone past just a recommendation in the comp plan.
Okay, so you mean policy ten, one?
I can't jump into ten point one. Uh, yes.
Is the seventy-five percent encouragement where is, is that a requirement or is that a fact requirement?
I would toss that one over to Ted. I believe it's just an encouragement, but.
It's, I'll get on camera. It's, it's an encouragement at this point. It has not been implemented, that actually comes from older complans as well, and that has not been implemented as a requirement in the growth mention program. It retains in there as a continuum of these things. It's retained as a goal of the comp plan, but it's not been implemented as one of those at this time. I believe it exists from the 2007 comp plan.
Page twenty-five, forty-four point four, timber harvesting standards. I've never seen it as the zoning ordinance would change regarding that.
To require timber harvesting?
It says something about a bend in the timber harvesting standards of the land use ordinance to maintain any high value deer wintering area. Whatever the type of that is.
The high value deer wintering yards are defined by the inland fisheries and wildlife, state inland fisheries and wildlife, they bend their maps from time to time, and actually it's in the shoreline zone.
That's rather odd.
True, it is, but that's where it is. It's kind of a relic, because there was a time when IFW and DEP were going down the same path, and so they put it as a critical resource, especially considering some of the arts were often in shoreline zone. But this town has had it in there for, since I think about 2007.
Okay, same page, forty-three point two, has an overlay zone protect forested wetlands larger than twenty acres, not that it would exist, it's been, been created.
Yes.
Where?
It's specified in the shoreline zone overlay districts. It's rarely occurred. I think that was developed in 2010. Ted, with the mapping of that, is the mapping of any of that approved, or is it still the same? No, it's still working on those maps. And the way we have it written in our ordinance, it's a condition where the, where the condition exists, the zone exists. Coratorium sometimes disagrees with that, but that's kind of the standard in shoreline zone law state, because the resources necessary to do all the mapping, which is pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Very expensive. So far, the town has not requested that, has not approved those kinds of expenditures for those kind of resources.
Do you have anything else?
I have a plan also, but you're saying all this is, was put in 2015, or fourteen, or seven, or nineteen ninety-two, or whatever.
It's not new, no.
It's not new. Those items that are new are those that are underlined in the text, and those deletions proposed in this are shown by strikeouts in the text.
If you have something you'd like clarified, we're here, which we have to help you to get, even if it's not new.
I, I, I'll be real direct, that, yeah, there is something that I'm puzzled by, the definition of the rural conservation districts. It was, I know that was, the R4 was created in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-four, ninety-six, somewhere around there, with the establishment of the Town House, Town, Town House Corner Business District. You've got R2 zoning all on, called Catherden Road. There's one large tract plant that is R4, that's Southeast of River Tracks. Doesn't seem particularly fair, one taxpayer is singled out. So the part of the town.
The, the reason for that, this, that was something that we focused on last year, in two thousand fourteen, was approved at the, well, fourteen, fifteen, it was approved at last year's town meeting. The language in the comp plan for R2 and R3 was extremely similar. They were both two acre zones. And when we looked at the list from the land use ordinance, we look at the list of conditional and permanent uses, they're in virtually no difference. So we took a lot of time and a lot of maps and looked at, right down to individual parcels to see what made sense. And as we looked at all of that, we came to the conclusion that it would make sense to propose that R3 simply go away and be rolled into R2. However, the other thing we did at the same time was we looked at abutting properties where districts came together, and in particular, R3 and R4, and said, is there some part of R4 that makes sense to roll into that as well? So we, we did take hours and hours and look at all of those parcels, and at some of the discussion, it revolved around the nature of the land, you know, what was its developable, developable possibility? And we ended up with the map that was proposed and approved last year, which was to take, you know, the parcels that you see on the map now that are still as rural conservation in the old R4, they stayed where they were. And then, as I said, R3 became R2. We also had a couple of public hearings where we invited abutters in, where there was a matter of, you know, do we put the line here, or do we put the line there? Because we also tried to follow lot lines, as opposed to just, you know, taking a straight line and cutting properties in half, or at least into two pieces, not necessarily half. Invited abutters in, those people that came in, we discussed their individual parcels, asked them, and in a lot of cases, much in reference, which, which district would you prefer to be in, and allowed them to make that decision based upon what we were looking at and what they knew about their land. So there was ample opportunity under those circumstances for some, some of the landowners to influence how that went, and her parents were one of the people who met in. She had the choice of, because she was, what, between R1 or R4.
Well, not my property, but family member.
Yeah, well, your property is what we discussed, Limerick Road.
I don't, I, I don't want to get ten acres, because I don't think mine was a change, but, but I have family members.
Yeah, so, you know, those opportunities were provided.
Got to make.
If, well, if you were abutting, dividing line between two districts, then you wouldn't have been invited into those public hearings as an abuter. But as it was discussed, again, we had, you know, public hearings that were just like this, run over to the public, so. However, that's something we'd like to have considered in the future.
Combined with the, it may not be place or time, but to me, the alternative of cluster housing or timber lots is not reasonable or practical. And I don't think this is the town's best interest. It was a taxpayer or.
I think it's more of a planning board discussion than it is for us.
It's in your comp plan.
I understand.
And you said last week that the planning board's function is, you say, no, then you ask how about?
And I'm not disagreeing with you. And, and I stand by that statement, because what, this is a blueprint, carries the basic direction.
I, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, you just tried to pass something off to the planning board.
No, I, I, not, not, not that piece of it. What I'm suggesting is that your, your objection or your agreement with that idea and how it may be implemented may be more of a discussion to have with the planning board, because at this point in time, it's in the comprehensive plan, it has been approved by the town, the planning board has not as yet come up with language to implement that, I don't believe, not the ten acre piece?
No.
Okay. So therefore, if there's going to be a logical way of there, that they just did to town, then another way, the planning board is in a position to hear that argument. The only other alternative is we back up and there would have to be a move to remove it from the comp plan. But then the job is to convince this committee and townspeople that it's an idea.
Why is it better? What's the basis for yours?
I, I, I believe that, that the cluster housing has a high possibility of actually encouraging lower value housing in a tight group that looks more like New Jersey than rural Maine. And the alternative, ten acre zone, is a serious hardship on the landowner. Landowner, there's three acre zoning, but you're being forced to either do cluster or ten acre zoning, it's hardship. If, if, if someone has an intent of creating estate lots of higher value housing with fewer schoolchildren, which given your, your, ah, might not be that idea. It seems to me that particularly, and this gets back to my question about why is certain type of land, so, the rural that R4, particularly closest to Kennebunk Court, where you're most likely to get people wanting to buy high value, build high value houses, I don't understand why the town is against that. It seems maybe increasing the tax base with less impact than having a cluster of twenty per lots that might have two and a half kids per household, and home values of, you know, hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Does any of that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to hear what your rationale was.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not saying that, but I'm jumping ahead, but I would like, whoever I need to talk to about it, I would like to discuss changing the ten acres to a smaller number.
Yes, sir.
If I may? There's no additional units that you can get through your property under cluster housing. Not getting more units because they're smaller lots. Cluster housing is basically.
Ted, I, I understand how it works.
Well, right now, the ordinance says basically that it's mandatory that you cluster, the intent of which is to fulfill a larger intent in the rural conservation district, which is to preserve open space. That was a major focus of the two thousand seven, two thousand five and two thousand seven comprehensive plan, something the townspeople desperately wanted to do. This was during the height of the, of the growth spurt during the mid two thousands. And the intent was to come up with a mechanism in which property owners could, could in fact get a reasonable return from their property, and yet have a mechanism by which they could preserve the open space and the character that the citizens of the town wanted to preserve so badly. They designated areas in town, which is a rural conservation, the R4 district, specifically because those were areas of two things, high value, open space area, undeveloped areas, and number two, limitations because of site constraints, especially soils and wetlands. So they, that's where they came up with those, those zones that you speak of between the Goss Mill Brook and the railroad tracks, and then the Lombard Road and the Cochs, basically, the timber river, excuse me. The idea of doing the ten acre lots was a departure, fairly large departure from the cluster concept of, we put houses in this area, we preserve this vast amount of open space. It was an, it was, it's a foray kind of into an older way of preserving rural quality, and that is by having larger lots. Not as effective as the other, but it gives property owners who want a different market approach, an alternative to mandatory cluster. So what ten acres does do is it lets you have a sense of elbow on ten acres, this is a good sized piece of property. It needs a market demand where there are those who in fact want ten acre lots, especially those who are pursuing equestrian interests. We've had a lot of people who wanted to equestrian.
Is there another town in the state of Maine that has a ten acre?
Yeah, it's on the border, City of Oregon, that may use that as one of the primary mechanisms in agricultural preservation, because they have a lot of good ag soils out there, they have ag soils of statewide significance out, out in that area. So they have ten acre zone. This was an alternative to mandatory shoreline, mandatory cluster.
I, I get that.
And also, you know, frankly speaking, when, when the board was looking for alternatives to cluster, in order to attract other, other demographic groups than, than what you would get with, let's say, one acre, two acre lots. And we've discussed ten acre zoning. And you say, if you really want to preserve rural quality, that's really the issue, and that was the issue behind rural conservation district, if that still is the important issue, then there are other ways besides just cluster, and one of which would be ten acre zoning. Well, the board reviewed that, came to the conclusion that ten acre zone was not politically valid, would not survive, that's not what a rental would accept. So this was an incentive alternative to the, to the, to the cluster concept.
So who do I talk to to get the number more?
Let's start with this group.
Okay.
Want the ten acre?
Yes.
Could have more houses, something you said you don't want.
Part of it.
That would generate more homes, something I thought you said that we probably don't want to have, you know, kids.
What I was saying is you have a different kind of, a different value of, different value of revenue of construction.
If I can take the ten acres and chop it up into three lots, and we've got three ounces of those.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, have more houses.
But, but if, if you've got a choice between doing cluster housing with three acres per, per residence, or what's called in the state lots with five acres per residence, that's certainly, a lot of it's almost cutting density in half. A five acre lot is a fairly private, it's, it's, it's a substantial piece of land, and I think that that would be, it's just polluting, but I think that would be a more marketable property while still being a great, being a rural character, although. They, they, I, I, sorry, let's stay focused. The, to me, that, that seems like a more reasonable trade off than three acres clumped together versus three acres clumped together or ten acre lots, and that's a, that's a real hardship on a property owner. And bottom line, I think what it, what it does is, I think, drive, any property owner who has land which can be developed, I'm not saying that I am such a property owner, but if, if there's somebody who is in R4 and has property which could be developed, then if you're forced into the cluster housing, you're going to have the, going to be a different kind of development, you're going to be going for a different market. You're going to be going for lower value houses. Candidly, I don't get why it's beneficial to have a bunch of houses jammed together the way they are in Jersey.
Or in New England, in village centers, when they jam together too.
If you had.
Come on, see on. Look at Kennebunk, those aren't five acre lots down downtown Kennebunk. The land shaft system, which is a landscape design, where we get the word landscape, is a classic European design that New England adopted with a center, very compact center, and then far, open land outside of it. A classic New England downtown, which many towns around here are.
But that, but that's.
Attempts to do that and recreate it with a town center and then houses, building centers around.
Ted, that is irrelevant, when you're talking about the individual residential developments of, you know, say, a thirty acre parcel here, or a twenty acre parcel there, that's, we're not talking about, we're talking about a little spot of New Jersey stuck in the woods.
Oh, I'd say that three acres could be New Jersey just as well too. Could be Basking Ridge, they've got three acres zoning there.
If you had to change that ten acre to a number that makes sense to you, what number would it be? Would it be, let us five?
Five's the ideal. I got, I have a friend, he's a subdivision in West Mountain, they had five acres, five acre restrictions in the suburbs, and they were very high value houses, really, really senior saver, and that's a bonus. To me, that, that seemed like, that just seems like, that's why it's hard for him. Good. Good.
Okay, no, I understand, but I just, I, I was just asking.
Yeah, and, 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 and it's a trade off right now, you would be, you would be taking three cluster lots, more than three plus, three point, three cluster lots to get one ten acre lot. So, you know, it doesn't take a rocket, you know, just economically, it gets, the, the ten acres is not really viable economically.
Okay. Obviously, we're not positioned to make a change now.
No, no, I, I understand that.
Yeah, I, what I would, I'll give you a little bit of background. Some of us on this committee have been during documents, full discussions, and I think we're small children at this point, but it's been decades. The issue of what's a good minimum acreage is, is one of the most persistent, consistent and annoying topics that we've discussed over the years. Around all, not too, too many decades ago, was two acre lots all over town. And then as the top plan developed, it was, we need to change that. And we floated one, three and five, I think that got, resoundingly defeated, five acres was too much. We ultimately settled on one, two and three. If you step back and you look at three acre lots, if we, if, we took all of our four and every three acre lot had a house on it, we would no longer have a rural community in any stretch of the imagination. It would look like parts of New Jersey. I'm from there, so I, I hear your pain. I would prefer we never looked like that. The same thing is true if, you know, if we had stuck with two acre lots. So one of the things that we've discussed over time is really the only effective way to keep open land in this town is to have somebody own it and not develop it. Because there is no rule that we can institute with a minimum number of acreage that the town would accept and then would work. So given those two extremes of, you know, keep it all open because people own it or have one or two or three acre lots, the interim position is what can we offer people who do have larger parcels of land as an incentive to keep it at least looking rural? And I grant you, you're approaching the economics of it as opposed to just the visual piece, but the visual piece is part of what we have always discussed. How do you keep it looking rural even though it may not be as rural as it used to be? And the cluster subdivisions is one tool in the toolbox. This time around, we suggest, or last time around, I should say, we suggested the ten acre piece because that was another option for landowners. So if I had a hundred acres and I needed to divide, it's an economic necessity for me to sell some land and do something with it. If I'm still going to live there as a person, would I prefer to look at this cluster of houses that looks like New Jersey or would I prefer to have houses on ten acre lots? So I know what my will would be. So it was just another option. Now, is five acres maybe a better option? I don't know, that's something that maybe we need to look at as a town. So I guess my suggestion would be two things. One, don't drop the issue, bring it back.
Don't worry about that.
And, and two, next year, once we go past town meeting and they're looking for members to be on the comprehensive plan review committee, I would like you to volunteer and join us.
Okay.
All right, because you have an interest, you have some knowledge and we need-
Lower is the way back machine.
Yes.
Once upon a time, a certain large parcel of land southeast of the river track was owned out of two acres. And when the R4 district was created, my father owned more than 50% of the land that went from two acres to three acres, which had as much to do with a personal disagreement that they formed a member of the planning board as it did anything else.
I could understand that.
And that's part of why when I look at the map, my blood pressure goes up.
Absolutely understand that. And I, if you talk to anybody in this town who owns a large parcel of land, I think you'll find at least a part of that same sentiment.
It, it, I got, the bottom line is that if, if, reading this document, in, in the land use ordinance, it feels as if my father spent forty years putting together a parcel of land only to have its value dramatically degraded by the county's southern businesses.
I will disagree with that.
Which I, I, I realize that the legal taking provision, the constitution is ignored on an hourly basis, but-
I don't think it quite goes that far, but I agree with you, that, that, that is, that is a price that is paid by people on the larger pieces of land. I, I don't disagree with you at all. I am one of those people. I'm not happy with it either always, but my intention is not to develop my land. But if I had to and I was stuck, I'd feel the same thing you feel. So join the group, get in and the discussion, let's see, this is, and has been, a work in progress. It always gets better. Sometime, well, it almost always gets better.
Might be some pickups along the way.
One of the big discussions we've been having along the way recently is the fact that some of these parcels that are larger parcels, over ten acres or more than that, even like some of the hundred acres are in the R1 zone. And they're very limited what they can do because they're in the wrong zone with the larger parcel. So one of the things we've been looking at is to also give, in other words, if you own a hundred acre parcel, you should have more options to farm or to equestrian or do things that you would normally do in the R4 zone.
When the discussion of those two, the new business districts along, one was coming up, came up last year, I was in a public, a couple of public hearings about that, and it's very clear that there were some property owners in that maybe lines got to be run and public people objected to those, that there were some property owners who were planning on having extended family living on, on, you know, and they're suddenly there being told, like, you can put a hundred thousand square foot warehouse, tire warehouse on the property, but you can't put a house for your son-in-law.
Well, that was one of the things that we heard very clearly, and we did try to address that.
And I, from what I've heard, we did, yes.
Yes.
I could make that for-
Yeah, so I, I, any place where more than, I was gonna say two people, maybe it's more than one person lives, you're going to have disagreements that are irresolvable because you can't make everybody happy all the time. I will say that this committee over the past three years, because we have had many public hearings and had extended invitations to specific landowners that were affected by things we were discussing, we have made an attempt to solve as many of those problems as possible. They're not all solvable. I think the only way to solve your particular issue with regards to the two acres versus three acres is to go back to two acres.
I, I, I have no desire to go back to two acres.
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know that that's either practical or-
No, 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 I have no desire to do that at all. It's, it's having a reasonable alternative to cluster.
And that's certainly something that I think a lot of townspeople would be interested in having, is a reasonable alternative. Whether the reasonable alternative is a five acre lot, a ten acre lot, a seven point five acre lot, it maybe remains to be seen.
Maybe a six acre lot.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, right now, it's a ten acre lot, but amendments, as you know, can be made.
One question, I think this is for Ted, I stumbled on language about working with residents with overboard discharge permits. That wouldn't be a follow-up on a conversation you and I had a year or so ago, would it?
No, that's been in there for a long, long time.
Okay.
One of the amazing-
Sorry to disappoint.
...documentaries that's got a lot of stuff in it that nobody knows.
Yeah, I have a stream which runs past one of my properties, which someone right across the road has overboard discharge permit, and a newer pile right next to the stream. And surprise, surprise, the BOD, the whole of Kennebunk River just below the discharge point of that stream is high.
Oh, I wonder why.
Can't imagine why.
Do you have anything else you'd like to discuss this evening?
No, and I, I apologize, I did not mean to monopolize-
Oh, no, don't, no, no. We would prefer to have somebody, I'd prefer to have somebody come and voice their opinions than to come and not say anything or feel that they can't say anything. I would prefer to sit here and talk with you for half an hour because you obviously care about what's in here. And, and I can tell you from experience, and I think also the people on this committee can tell you, that even as committee members, because all of us have different views, different size blocks, even we can get into it sometimes.
Oh, I, I, I am loaded to doubt.
But, but I would, as Donna did, I would encourage you, because you seem to be knowledgeable about it, you seem to be passionate about the subject, about lots and sizes, I would encourage you to, to join us. And, you know, maybe you can bring a new perspective or new ideas to what we've worked on. I would, I would welcome hearing them on a more, more often. But don't ever apologize for not working and talking. Okay, does anybody have any other questions regards to the proposed changes of the comprehensive plan for this goal round?
I have a discussion similar to Ted's. And Simone just brought it up, preserving the open space is what was on my mind. When I applied for my permit for my animals back in, I don't remember, oh two, maybe oh three, I, I saw the limitation of five animal units, which is a thousand pounds of animal weight. Did not constrict me, although you might say some of my animals are hefty because they're very low fed, but they're not that low fed because they're, they're not heavy animals. So that didn't restrict me, but I did notice that it wasn't a per acre restriction, it was just five animal units. But this topic has come up again, now, not with me, but with another firm, preserving open space. It doesn't make sense to me, and we have this situation right now, I'm sure you're aware of, of large tract of land can't be put back into production into something that it was for many, 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 many years because of that restriction. So that doesn't lend itself to preserving open space. So my question is, is there a route to resolve that? I don't think there is, but is there a route to take? Exception, variance, and Simone just mentioned it, if people with a large tract of land can give them more options.
Actually, yes. It's already in the top line. We, that was another thing that we've worked on and fixed last year, approved at last year's town meeting with regards to tracts of land, get to the right page here as well, say something backwards. We have one paragraph here on page eight that applies to R1 and there's a similar paragraph that applies to R2 on page nine. I can't tell you the, by the time this comes on, this particular paragraph, the one that's under development standards, second paragraph, lot sizes is the beginning, and if you get down to about the middle of the paragraph, small scale agricultural and natural resource uses should be allowed with new agricultural uses subject to legitimate standards to protect adjacent residential areas. Animal husbandry, equestrian facilities, agritourism and restricted contracted yard uses should be allowed subject to conditions including minimum appropriate acre requirements minimize the impact on surrounding lots due to odor noise and traffic and require appropriate setback screening and buffering for animal husbandry, the species of animals will be taken into consideration regarding those conditions. What that is designed to do is to allow landowners in R1 and R2 one of two acre lot restrictions. And we have larger tracts of land, and we played with that, they're from this ten acres again, we think if you have ten acres or more, you can probably get away with more than the five animal units and not infecting them.
So is that implemented?
And now, in the lack of the planning board, they're, they have to do that next step to turn-
Wheels of justice.
I'm sorry, what, what is the five animal?
An animal unit was defined as-
No, no, where, where does it applicable?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's applicable in R1 where I-
If, if there have been cows and a pasture since 1939, I don't need to worry about it, right?
I wouldn't even mention it to anyone because they probably don't see them anymore. But in a, in a nutshell-
I suspect they do.
In, in a nutshell, R1 and R2 have a five animal unit limit, which is five thousand pounds of animal. So obviously, it's, the, the number, the number of animals is significantly different if you have cows as opposed to germs. In R4, there is no such restriction. It is, you can have more than five animal units.
Like, that's good, very, very basic.
But in answer to your question-
Well, you would be, you would be grandfather.
Yeah.
You would be grandfather.
Well, literally, who is my grandfather's father?
Yes, right. But the issue is, for, for other folks, and, and, yeah, it didn't, it didn't restrict me, it just, just came to light and I thought, you know, I never really dealt with that way back, didn't bother me, so I never brought it up, you know. But it is an issue now.
Yes, it is, and it's a real issue, and we, as I said, we attempted to address it.
Yeah. I mean, because there's open space there, that, do we really want to see house lots?
Well, I agree.
On a mountain road?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Well, one of the, one of the, the arguments, one of the counter arguments to what we discussed was, remember, these are residential districts?
Yes.
And there are people there who expect to live in a residential area, which is why we've been in all the language about the buffer and screening and all of the necessary things you need to be aware of so that you don't annoy the existing neighborhood. However, another piece of the discussion was, okay, if you have a hundred acre piece in R1, so you're surrounded by one acre lots, but you have a hundred acre piece, how will you impact them more than if you are in R4 and you have a three acre lot and no five animal unit restriction? Your neighbors are not as close as one acre lot neighbors, but certainly closer than if you're in the middle of a hundred acres in R1. So-
Can you put a lot of pigs in three acres?
Yes, you can. And oddly enough, pigs figured heavily in our discussion. In fact, we went through almost a year with a pig on every agenda, because we had fun with pigs. But again, it's a, it's a back and forth discussion. They were on there. The, the planning board needs to finish their work with regards to the language that will allow that to go much more smoothly as of date.
Is there anything different in the works on farm retail?
Not as far as we are concerned.
So we're still in the same place, Ted, with farm retail?
Is that a new place?
Well, farm retail was added, I think it was last year.
Yes.
And two, two years ago.
Two years ago.
And I had a very long discussion with the planning board, I looked it up, it was the fall of 2012, about farm retail for, for me. At, I'm at R1. But as it came out and was voted on, it was not permitted in R1. Permitted in every other, well, not in R1. So it didn't help. So I continue on with what I'm doing under the home occupation rules. And, and-
I may be wrong, and I'm willing to be corrected if somebody can tell me I'm incorrect, but there is nothing in the comprehensive plan that I know of that prevents farm retail from being allowed in R1, that would be applied to a decision with regards to-
The land, the way they came out with the land use ordinance, it's not permitted.
Right.
It's not conditional, it's not-
Not permitted, right, so that, that's, but that's something that you could take up with the planning board.
Well, I get for a while.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the issue's depth.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think we reached an impasse, we saw it, it sort of spiraled to absurd heights. I think it's, 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 as part of the discussion of what to do with larger lots in some of the residential districts or farm, to promote farms in residential districts so they do not have an impact. I think that's something the planning.
We talked about buffer zones, we talked about setbacks.
I think it's gotta be more, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a larger context than what we were talking about before, because we couldn't get past a lot of stuff. Planning board couldn't agree on a lot of stuff. But I think in discussing on a larger basis and in dealing with, with agricultural and larger lots, there's more danger than that category. But I think that, that, that issue of farm retail will reverse. Okay? That's the intent that we're going to, but we'll see. So, you're gonna have to come to more planning board meetings. I know, I know it's something you look forward
to.
I had a rooty down yesterday, I doubt it's mine too.
I still don't understand.
Planning board meetings can be a lot of fun.
They can.
They can. You know, at least you get to say something, you get to speak up, and you get to make presentations.
I was intrigued with the, the meeting, the chair's deputy was there for the first item on the agenda and left thirty seconds after the sort of thing was left.
Let me run along. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the current comprehensive plan whose changes? There are none, I will call the public character close, and then we will have our regular meeting during which I will have one vote.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Buss, that you had your issues and concerns, Tim, you had your issues and concerns. You folks are here.
I observe for issues and concerns.
All right. I just, I just wanted to check to see if there were any that you had any concerns about, or.
I attended the last planning board meeting, and, you know, there, there was some issues that, you know, I basically sided with a lot of the people on this board with. And I have to say, there were, you know, I reviewed the work that was done by the planning board as well, and I thought that had a lot of good work. It was just a way unfortunately got implemented. So, my concerns really with that is, you know, how things work together. Okay? The two boards work together in some sort of manner, and, you know, I just want to see what's going on here, watch what's going on with the planning board as well. Because I, the point was there, you know, we kinda were moving in a, in a direction that really, you know, going to what was presented, I thought we should have gone to a town meeting, at least with the bulk of the town residents available to vote on, rather than a special town meeting the way it was called. Okay? In all fairness, I think that would have been something that more town members really would have been interested in versus in passing at such a small meeting. And that's why I, you know, I kinda jumped into it myself with the vote the way I did. It wasn't against the work, I thought the work was pretty good. However, I do agree that the two entities need to be on the same path.
And we have had co-means between the two groups, the planning board, the comprehensive planning board, to try and alleviate any of those issues in the past. We definitely look forward to doing it in the future because we have ideas and reasonings behind what we propose, and we also want to make sure that they understand what it is that we're trying to do. They may read something as, oh, they want to do this. Well, we just like to be able to work together so that things are clear, they know what our intentions were, and they can move on for their, their work.
Just like I say, I'm here as an observer.
No, but I appreciate it.
That's what I'm glad you are.
I have a motion to, oh, and pro- amendments and corrections, or is there something proceeding? I'm reading, coming for some.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Okay. Thanks very much for your input.